Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region. My name is Brandon and welcome to this Free State Colorado interview. The mission of Free State Colorado is to promote a culture of liberty, freedom of the individual and a free market. Today I'm joined by Jacob Luria, a candidate for Golden City Council, running in the November 2023 election. Well, Jacob, I hope you are well and thank you for joining me today.
Thanks for having me, Brandon. I'm doing pretty good. How are you?
Hey, doing well. Thanks. Appreciate you asking. It's a beautiful Colorado day here and looking forward to getting outside and enjoying some of the sun before the cold weather comes in.
Yeah, it's it's nice. I think it's gonna be in like the mid eighties over the weekend and then the seventies next week. So it should be a a nice temperature. It's getting it's getting into that right temperature for knocking doors. It's been it's been a little bit hot, but you do gain a little bit of sympathy from people when you knock on their door and you're a little sweaty and you're like, I'm running for office. And they're like, good for you for walking around in this heat. I wouldn't do it. And you're like, yeah, I'm crazy. I don't know what to tell you.
Well, wonderful. Jacob, what made you want to run for office?
Um, because you hear for a long time, people talk about, uh, you know, be the change you want to see, or if you're unhappy with what's going on. So I ran for state house last year, learned a lot unsuccessful, understandably. Um, but I learned a significant amount. The Golden local election city council elections were up this year. I wasn't really sure if anyone was running and especially with crime and tax problems and some other issues that you don't expect a small town like Golden to necessarily have to deal with. Um, I figured I would just throw my throw my hat in the ring and try and build some liberty in a small town of of Golden.
Awesome. Well, no, that's good. It's very admirable. It's an important thing to do for people to get involved in local politics, especially. And like you said, it's not always easy, you know, putting in the work, knocking on doors in ninety degree heat and rain and snow and all of that coming up. So awesome. What what would you say are the issues in Golden that you're going to focus on if you win in November?
Um, so the main focus of my platform is abolishing the local mill levy, which affects property taxes, um, tackling crime in a community oriented way. And I don't necessarily mean that in a progressive community organizer way. I mean, in uh empowering citizens to protect their property, maybe establishing some side of city watch, which we have had before. A lot of people I've talked to on their doors are very open to that idea. Um, the police chief even in Golden is trying to build um more of a community branch where he can talk to segments of the community, maybe it's mobile home or business owners or whatever, and get a more direct briefing from them on what issues are you experiencing? What does the police force have to tackle? So I think a lot of people are open to more community involvement. Um, empowering small businesses, which is, you know, small businesses are our background downtown Golden is thriving in some sense, but of course there are always bureaucratic burdens and processing fees and taxes that we could really free up our businesses from. And then the last thing is government transparency. Golden does not necessarily have a reputation as being non transparent. Um, most of the city council people, whenever you talk to citizens, even if they don't necessarily know what they voted on or their policies are, when they call the city council person, the city council person shows up. So that's something I want to continue and then add any additional transparency. Um, anybody who gets in office, I think often sees the the muck and grime and how the sausage is made. And I'm sure there are ways to make things a little bit more transparent to those who want some transparency in their government.
Well, I'm really glad you talked about the mill levy. I mean, one of the biggest political issues this year, and it's gonna be even bigger issue next year as the property taxes keep to continue to increase is just, you know, people getting priced out of their home. I mean, I'm hearing stories from people in the community. People are worried about paying these bills, especially, you know, some of the longtime residents, people who've retired Golden or Vada, different places across the metro area who are seeing these skyrocketing bills and and maybe can't afford them. You know, it's kind of sad. The cost of everything's increasing. So can you talk a little bit about what that means to to lower the middle levy or to abolish the middle levy? What would that do for people in Golden?
Sure. So I some people know this, some people don't. The state is ultimately what sets the assessment rate of what your home is valued at. But it is your county and your local towns and cities that ultimately set the property tax rate, which we call the mill levy rate. So each town sets a mill levy rate, your school board sits a mill levy rate. Um, and then there are a couple other things, and then all of that put together um is what your final mill levy rate is, and that then is what your actual property tax rate is. So in Golden, our mill levy rate is twelve right now. Um, some people have mentioned bringing down to ten, five. I just think starting at abolishing the property taxes in total. Ultimately, I think it's not just a issue of pricing people out of their homes, which is, I think, the central issue for most people taxes going up. Even people in the mobile home communities are feeling, you know, the heat quite a bit. And the state passed a number of regulations for them that have ultimately just sort of backfired, have forced people out of those communities because they had to set up certain facilities they didn't have before, maybe didn't need. Um, but it's also a moral issue of you should own your property, not the government. There is an understandable of, okay, I don't have the money. I'm getting a mortgage and thus the bank essentially owns it because the bank is the one who's paid for it and you're paying the bank back. But you shouldn't have to give the government money on top of that. I've talked to a lot of people. I don't like the income tax either. Most people seem more upset understandably about a property tax, especially when you've worked hard all your life to buy a house. You've owned a house for all of these years, thirty, forty years. It isn't right that you are. I mean, it's there's an argument to be made that you don't really own your property, then you're still renting it from the government and they never bought the house. Also, I think there's just a fair point to be made at this point that the governments, whether they are local, county, state, federal, have just mismanaged and misused their taxes. They don't have a right to your money. It is something that we vote on and pass because citizens feel like they will get services or roads will be taken care of or, you know, X, Y, and Z. And we just see that's not the case. The roads are a mess in Colorado. Um, and in a town like Golden, where we have the Coors headquarters, we have the School of Mines, we have a lot of thriving downtown businesses. It's not a big, very big downtown area. Golden seems a little spacious, but once you get to those outer edges, it is, you know, more spatial neighborhoods. We don't have a large metropolitan area. It's even smaller than our data is. There is no reason why we can't run this town on private investment instead of taxes. And I um, and the way that Golden is, a lot of the residents really care about Golden. Uh, people really have an investment in this town. I think people will invest in it with the less taxes that they pay. That probably will not be the popular thing with the government, but ultimately it's not their money. They need to take it from you. And at some point, I don't want to say they have um given up the right, because I don't want it to be indicated that taxes are right in any way that government gets. But they have certainly um, they have blown their credibility on being able to use this properly. So I'm gonna push for the opposite direction and, you know, at this point, I don't see a lot of people running the radical tax plans that I that I would really like. So um, I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna propose. And some people have certainly gotten on board, like I said, because a lot of people don't like their property taxes.
Yeah, no, I love it. I think that's a great idea in terms of, you know, keeping people in their homes, longtime residents, keeping them invested in their community. They're not worried about having to move to get priced out. They can really spend their time and energy building a better community, building a better golden. And the businesses as well, of course, are affected by those property tax rates or the mill levy rates especially. So, you know, keeping small businesses in the in town and keep it affordable for small businesses is is huge. And I think the city council really can have a massive impact doing that specifically over that middle levy rate. So really exciting to hear that. And I think it's a message that people in Golden should really get behind, you know, keep it keep it affordable for people to live there, especially as some of these longtime residents and business owners.
Yes, and there has unfortunately been plenty of cronyism with the new housing that's being built in Golden. Now, some of the older residents and I have a little bit of a difference of view understandably. I am looking for cheaper housing. I also understand as a longtime resident and retiree, um, there are a lot of beautiful views in Golden. And I think it's respectable that those people do not want those views taken or those views, you know, demolished. And Golden, the outer areas are big enough that there is space to build new housing that doesn't affect current residents, but provides cheaper housing for younger residents like myself or new residents. But there's been so much cronyism that I'm familiar right now with two apartment buildings being built. One that is on South Golden Road, which is a a major back road for anybody who doesn't necessarily know Golden. It is, it takes you from where Lakewood and Golden meet all the way to the town sort of as a an option, different option from Route Six. There is a seven eleven there. There was a big plot of land that arguably you could have built um some businesses, which is a sort of business area. They are building a six foot, seven foot apartment building, which is not inherently a problem, but they are pricing these apartments at three to four thousand dollars. That is not a realistic price for most residents of Golden. And I can only, it only leads me to believe that they are trying to draw out wealthier people out of Denver who may not want to live there anymore and move into Golden. But these things need to be left as a natural thing without government involvement. And the local city council, they want to build a bunch of housing projects in Golden. The residents don't like it. So they ultimately were very happy that the state legislature, so they couldn't get their big land use bill. But Golden was one of three cities or three towns that had its right to local housing essentially removed from it. Um, where they just are not allowed, the the Golden City Council is not allowed to stop certain projects that the state wants to move forward on. I think a lot of our city council members are very happy about this. Took the responsibility off them, but ultimately still achieves what they want to achieve. I have no problem with new housing, but it needs to be affordable. Um, and in my neighborhood, there's an apartment building being built down on the corner. A lot of residents are unhappy about it. And there is an argument to be made that it's not a great location for an apartment complex, even with four or five stories. There is only one way in and out of our neighborhood. So you're going to take what already is kind of a busy road and ultimately create gridlock traffic. There is almost no space that there's going to be for parking. So I'm not sure where most of those people are going to park their cars. Um, and it just is going to, I think it's gonna make everyone unhappy. It's gonna make the current people who live in this neighborhood unhappy, and I think it will meet the make the people moving in unhappy. It's like any apartment apartment you move into, it seems great at first, and then as time goes by, you see more and more issues with it, more and more problems. And being a rentee, there's so much less control of what you can do with that area. So I just think it's going to make everyone unhappy, not fix where we want to. And especially because the other apartment complexes being priced at three to four thousand dollars. I'm very worried about what the price of that is going to be um, and how that will just affect the local area. And I don't think it was a natural market decision to build the apartment complex there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's interesting. Uh, I think you hit the nail on the head in terms of housing, a land use zoning, all of this is gonna be, is gonna continue to be major issues. You know, the state legislature, I'm sure in twenty four is gonna do everything they can to push high density housing into some communities that don't want it. As we saw them attempt and partially succeed in twenty three. And of course, you know, people who live in these communities don't want that. They don't want their way of life ruined. They don't want increased crime, homelessness, traffic, everything that comes with more high density housing, you know, especially Golden, you're you're right in the foothills of the mountains. So it does feel like it almost feels like you're in a mountain town, or at least it has for a long time, you know, you got the the beautiful views right there, but you're still close to Denver. It's really a great community. So, you know, it's nice to see people standing up for the community, standing up for Golden and and doing what they can to really get involved with the local, local population there.
Yeah, I mean, Golden has always been the sort of catchphrases, a two hour vacation from Denver, because it is, you still have that flair of the West. You are in the foothills, the mountains are right there. I mean, as a skier, a skier is my wife and I, we moved from downtown Denver to here. We love it. I mean, it's still a little bit too, you know, Winter Park, but cutting out that whole time on Route Six from Denver to here makes a huge difference. It is, it is a nice, you get that smaller town feeling with still being close enough to civilization. Um, and Golden is in this place where it is either a lot of younger people or older retirees. And so I think the other thing with housing, people don't want to wait for the nap for these natural time spans that happen, which is understandable. Eventually, a lot of these retirees, you know, within ten or fifteen, twenty years, they are gonna pass away. They are gonna leave their houses to their kids. Probably people who don't want to live in Golden and will sell their house. Um, and then, you know, that whole cycle will sort of start over again. We always want to interfere with economic cycles, and unfortunately, I think it just leads to more disaster. And as you said, with the legislature pushing all these housing bills and laws. I mean, it makes me wonder if like, this is a little bit of a joke, but if they're trying to turn Colorado into just mega city one, because I mean, they're talking about a high speed rail out to the front range. It it, I mean, I think we could use another one or two major highways in the state, but eventually we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna push all these ranchers out and we're gonna start building things in the mountains that are probably not safe and stable. They've done that in Golden at the end of my road. I'm in the Pleasant View area. There's a high hilltop. And in the fifties, they listed it as a, you shouldn't build here. This is a, this is a danger slip zone. People, of course, tried to build there anyways in the seventies, and the house, the day before the folks moved in, literally collapsed and was that close to taking out the other houses on the road. So these are, these kind of things are gonna be overlooked as they're trying to just force more people in into these places. Um, I think it's just gonna backfire and I, like I said, I want lesser regulation on housing. I want more housing to be built, but this is not the way to go about it.
Yeah, you know, it's this, it's this battle between these central planners, these authoritarian bureaucrats who have this vision of what they want the community to be at odds with what the people who live there actually want in their community. And I think that's a theme that we're gonna see continue on and having individuals champion the the people who live in the community and the residents there, I think, is gonna be really important.
Exactly. And you might disagree with some political philosophy of your neighbors, but it is so much easier to understand their viewpoint, respect your neighbor when they are your neighbor. You know, because you are relating to them on a level that the people in the state legislature, even their house reps can't. I mean, I ultimately, the the district I'm in represents I don't know, maybe like ten thousand people, a little bit more. It's such a more manageable group to represent that. Not everyone is gonna come to your office as a city councillor. Not everyone is gonna have an issue. Um, but when I talk to people, they can talk to their city councillors. It's almost, it's hard to talk to a state rep or a state senator. And I have learned recently, a lot of US congressional reps work out of privately owned office buildings. It is, you can't just walk in and talk to your congressional rep. In fact, um, there's a group I've been working with. We've been going to a lot of different offices. Hickinlooper's is the only office we were able to get into that even reached back out to us. And I can't help but wonder if it's because at one point he was a governor. And so he just had to deal with people on the level that senators and congressmen just can ignore. And it's very, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is unfortunate to see this disconnect between the politicians and the people. So, you know, I guess talked a little bit about your background, kind of what you're interested in pursuing as a city council uh member there. What what differentiates you from your opponents? I mean, what what's the differences between you and your opponents?
Um, that is a great question, to be honest. So at least the one woman I have encountered, Lisa Vittree, very nice woman, I think, is a concerned member of her community. Um, my only worry there is I just don't think she necessarily has much of a platform. Wanting to represent and be the voice of the community is is absolutely good, which is, I think, something any of us who are running should be. But I also think we are dealing with some some major issues. And if it were me, I would want someone who really understands the property tax issue a little bit more, has uh some more plans on everything, even if not everything can be accomplished. And then in terms of the other two people, I'm not sure. I haven't seen any of their websites yet. Um, so I'm not really sure what differentiates me at at this point. Um, what I'm, I'm hoping opposed to everyone else is I have a real plan. I have a pretty good amount of support right now, some local people. Um, I was phone banking, you know, in our community on Friday, talked to a very nice twenty four year old man who shares a lot of concerns. He's gonna put up my lawn sign, gonna come out door knocking with me. So um, I I I I would like to say that's what I think differentiates me. I just don't have all of the information to be able to answer that as intricately as I would like to.
Nice. No, that's great. That's great. Awesome. Yeah, you gotta have a plan. You gotta have a vision for people, you know, some for people to get behind, say, hey, here's what I'm gonna be doing if you if I can earn your vote. So very important. And and yeah, good to see that you got that compared to your opponents. So what what can people do to support your campaign?
So right now, the two things I need most, I can always use more door knocking volunteers. Um, you know, you can never get enough. I do have a volunteer group of about a half a dozen meeting on Saturday. We're gonna canvass, which is fantastic. Um, it's been nice. I've gotten a lot more support than when I ran for state house, when you're in something a little bit more feasible. I think, you know, people want to want to help you. I also think in Colorado, there is a hunger for getting involved more locally. And then always like, you know, every politician is going to ask you for donations, and I could definitely use some more. At this point, my major fundraising is going to be for a mailer that I want to send out, probably about a week before the week that ballots go out. I think this year on a local level, all of us of candidates have a little bit more time. I don't think you're gonna see the as many first week ballot voters as you do on a presidential year or even a primary year. Um, in twenty twenty, ninety percent of Coloradans voted in the midterms. We had a lower turnout than we did in twenty sixteen or in twenty fourteen, I'm sorry, which was our last pretty low. I think a lot of people are just tired of Washington politics. They're tired of on a level they can't control. Um, and I do believe liberty starts local. I do believe getting involved in your community and a local level is what's gonna make America a lot better. Even if we don't agree with everybody, you will feel so much better about the compromises you've made when you're talking to your neighbors or engaging your city councillors directly than oh, I have to show up at the state house every day at noon for another bill that I don't like when I'm supposed to be working. So how can I take off work? At least our city council meetings are at night. Our city councillors are required to have some kind of open office hours at some point during the week. Um, there just is more accountability there. And I think people feel more empowered at a local level.
Well, I really like that idea. Yeah, people being empowered at the local level. Like you said, you know, people are tired of the Washington DC politics, this corporate news that people are seeing all the time, and it can be so depressing and so discouraging for a lot of individuals who believe in freedom, liberty, or just want to stand up for their community. So to actually be able to to do something about it and focus in your neighborhood where it matters most. You know, getting involved in a local campaign is definitely one of the ways to do that.
If I can rally and give some hope to the younger people in Golden, that that will be the best outcome. I have no matter what else happens. As someone who was born in nineteen ninety, you know, I remember ninety to two thousand, you know, enough, but was not invested in culture. I mean, I was in elementary school. But definitely ever since nine eleven has happened, we have lived in an environment of nothing but fear. I have been asked to be scared of the terrorists. I have been asked to be scared of, you know, my neighbors or Democrats or the Republicans or these people or these people. We have, we've taken every hope for the future that young people should have, and we've crushed it and we've thrown it in the garbage. And then we wonder why young people are depressed and on SSRIs. And, you know, my generation getting out of colleges with expensive degrees with no job prospects in what you got your degree for and a massive income to pay back all the money that you have borrowed. We just uh, and I I didn't live in the nineteen hun- in the early nineteen hundreds, fair enough. But at least the way we talk about history, it seems like someone in nineteen ten, their life was hard, but they knew that their children's life would be better and they lived in America and there was hope for the future. And we need to get back to that. Like Vivek Ramaswamy often talks about creating a national identity again. I don't think America ever really had a national, excuse me, a national identity. I think you have state identities and local identities. And then I think when there is something like a war, like World War One or World War Two, it does create some sense of national identity. But America is a country built on ideology and not culture, not race, not these group of people or that. When the country was founded, we had native groups, British, Germans, French, all living in this country, all with different cultures who just kind of coalesced around the idea of natural rights and freedom. And if there is a national identity, it might be that. But I think it's more important that people build up our identity of what Golden, Colorado is, and that will give us pride of how does that, how does Golden relate to the rest of Colorado? But then how is it different? What do we offer as a unique perspective in this state? And people will take pride in in that. It's, it's why coming from a theater world, people do community theater and why there's a lot of pride in that. It's not always great. It certainly is always vastly underfunded. And people do it for free, but they love every minute of it and their communities love it. And my wife used to live in Crestview, Colorado and work at the local theater there. I've seen it. You know, there isn't, there is a decent amount of art there, but people who even may not think they love theater, they go and show up because they know someone in that show, you know, they're their coworker or their family or their friend or whatever. It just creates a sense of community pride. I think maybe that's a better way to put it. We need community pride over a national identity.
Oh, yeah, can't agree with you more. I think, you know, getting people invested in their community, you know, being proud that they, hey, I live in Golden. I live in in these small communities here. This is my neighborhood. This is my town. We take care of it. You know, we can afford to stay in our homes because the property taxes are lower than they are in other parts of the state or the cost of living might be slightly lower. So we can stay here. We can belong here. You know, people are addressing, you're talked about addressing crime and some of these other issues to protect the small businesses. And yeah, that would definitely give people a sense of pride in their community to know that there's some stability in the community in terms of the people living there, the businesses that are there and that there's a city council member out there who's gonna stand up for him and and put their interests um, put their interests at the forefront of what the city council is gonna do. So I think that's huge. And I really liked what you said about, you know, the kind of these founding ideals about liberty, freedom, and you know, these kind of uh, you know, natural rights, as you said. So I want to talk a little bit about the Libertarian Party. So you're the campaign director for Libertarian Party of Colorado. I've been in a Libertarian Party activist for a time now. So what should Coloradans know about the Libertarian Party?
So I would say at least in terms of the Libertarian Party of Colorado, there has been a shift over the last couple of years in terms of what our focus is is on. Our, I don't want to say new party, obviously, but in terms of the leadership now, we are trying to be less partisan. We're looking for coalitions and allies to help build Colorado. We will actually stand up for principles. If you are someone who believes in individual liberty and you believe in the idea of the individual over the collective and that people have rights from oppression, they have a right to start a business, they have a right to protect their family, all of these things. That is something we will stand up for. I know I will because I have literally nothing to lose. Not to sound wildly unimpressive as a person, but besides the theater that I do, my day job is a is an insurance, you know, clerk. It's fine, you know, we definitely help people, but I have no, um, I have no career to lose. I have nothing to lose by, I feel like, standing up and giving voice to those people. Um, we are trying to build it at a ground up level. So if you are interested in running at a local office, especially races being non partisan, we are open to working with and helping people who are moving toward the objectives that we want, who may not be completely registered libertarian at this moment. Um, we gave a little bit of help, although she did most of the like work on a woman named Carolyn Romero, who is out by Kitteridge Park. She almost had her land grabbed by the government. Um, you know, mainly what we did is just promoted her social media. She actually gave a lot of local support to show up, but she beat the county commissioners. They tried to steal half of her backyard and and add it to a park that they were not entitled to. These are all the things we we are absolutely will fight for. We're not that large of a party. We are always happy to to bring people in and give the voice to people. And we are also, our single goal is to work on single issue coalitions. So even if we don't agree on everything, but there is one thing that we will agree with, let us know, we'll show up, we we will help you. I know for me personally, um, I've been very heavily involved now with the Julian Free Julian Assange group. Not everyone in that group is libertarian. We have Democrats, Republicans, progressives, communists, um libertarians, we have, you know, Rothbardians, a bunch of different people. But everyone who acknowledges that freedom of speech and freedom of the press is crucial to keeping the truth out there and a free society. And we don't talk about almost anything else, just trying to get the message out on Julian Assange, a man who did not blow the whistle on anything that was not highly illegal, someone who did not put anyone's lives in danger. Um, and he has yet to technically be tried, but he has been sitting in a jail cell for years. It's the same feeling I had when in Portland, Black Lives Matters protesters were being picked up in our marked vans or what's happened to many of the people with January sixth. We get riled up on these people we don't like and we like to say, good, those people are suffering these consequences. But it's more scares me because what if one day that is me and then who will stand up for me in that situation? So in a in a local level, we can protect our communities, we'll get to know people better. And maybe we won't other people so much. National politics has othered and divided us so much. And even being involved in Libertarian Party, I found out I don't agree with everybody here, different people. And even being involved in Libertarian Party, I found that I don't agree with everybody here, different people. Some people care about economic things more, some people care about social issues more, but. If we can all, if we. See people face to face a little bit more, interact with our neighbors a little bit more. I think everything will be a little bit better. It's easy to hate someone you never see. And never interact with, but it is hard to hate the elderly lady down your street. Even if she has voted different from you, you know, for the years that you've been neighbors. But you see her garden every day and she grows you vegetables and brings you, you know, I don't know, that's, that's the kind of like. That's the Amer- the America that I want, of strong communities that support each other.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you you brought up a crucial point that politics tends to dehumanize people. You know, on so many levels, right? It's us versus them. It's this tribal mentality for the most part. And you see it every day, especially now more than ever, I'd say on social media, you know, good that these guys got locked up, good that, you know, go lock these guys up, this and that. But I think libertarians do offer that third way, that kind of alternative perspective where, hey, we're talking about a philosophy, or we're talking about something that's, that's. More than just us versus them. It's, it's a principle. It's this idea of these principles that have created the prosperity and the freedom that we currently enjoy. It needs to be preserved, protected, and and in many ways expanded. So I think that's really exciting. Yeah, it's really exciting too, to see the Libertarian Party become uh, much more active in recent years. You know, especially with with what you and the other board members have been doing and just the, the growth and the movement building up. And it's really exciting, actually, I think, for a lot of people in Colorado who. Maybe were members of Libertarian Party in the past, but kind of fell off the wayside because they weren't doing anything or didn't see any. Any movement or action there. And now there's a reason for people to get involved, to to know that there's this organized group of of liberty lovers out there who are gonna be standing up for Colorado. So it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, we are, we have more young people in the Libertarian Party than either the Republicans or Democrats, and that number is growing. A lot of our new leadership is younger, and what that provides our party with something that it hasn't always had in the past, because the party is still only 50 years old. You had younger people at different points, but now you have a whole. Real generation of younger people who wanna see this world freer, and we have the energy in the years to give to see that happen. And I know I'm one of many people, we're, we're done sitting by the wayside. We are ready to change. Thing, we're ready to to make a change in how we are doing things, work with people maybe we haven't worked before. Eh, expand freedom and liberty where we need to. And a lot of us like me. We just don't feel like we have anything to lose, because if we don't, I feel like if I don't get involved. It's gonna be hard for me to complain if things do. Get worse so over the years. My wife and I, you know, are are trying to have kids and. I wanna be able to look at my children and at least say that I tried. Um, I, I don't have, um. Not an Elon Musk, I'm not a, a, um, Tim Cook or Jeff Bezos. I'm not going to be anyone who invents something who makes the world better. So maybe I can at least make life a little bit easier for my neighbors. And what I'm. What I'm hoping is that as we grow, that liberty will really become the status quo again, and it won't be. It won't be a conversation of, well, what are we gonna do without property taxes? It will be a conversation of, well, no, we can't. Tax our property. That that sounds absolutely crazy. And economic history has shown that when you ease tax burdens because of. All the other normandy of taxes we pay for and businesses pay for. The government ends up taking in way more money with the less taxes it it has in the more simplified tax system. I mean, I was like almost no taxes. I understand that's probably not going to ultimately happen, but I am definitely at least going to, I'm gonna start there and I'm gonna. Push everyone in that direction and then see where we can compromise and make. I would like to abolish the property taxes. Maybe I can't, but if it starts at 12 and now it's at five. That at least is in a right direction. And then when people see a little bit more money. In their, you know, back every year or keeping a little bit more money every year. Then all of a sudden will be, wow, this is, this is good. I I have more money. I don't see a a decrease in my community at all. In fact, all of a sudden, I'm seeing more investment in my community, you know, um, I'm not a person who thinks. Corps building something and naming it after themselves is inherently bad in the community. A lot of rich people did that in the early 1900s. I know people make fun of Trump because he puts his name everywhere, but. Um, anyone who's a theater fan who knows Sound of Music, this is a plot in in the thing of. The library and the church and all these buildings, a rich dude in the community, he built them all and he put his name on it. But he provided things for the community and the government did not need to. I mean, Hershey is famous for building a town. So he can keep his workers closer and. People often think, you know, those are the people who don't pay their workers more. There was a riot during the Great Depression, and when he wanted to build a stadium, they hung his town manager and said, give us more money, and he gave them more money. So. That is, I mean, that that is a little intense, but like you get my point of. These people built, actually really built communities without government involvement. We have the people in Golden to do that. And I. I, and I think with the size Golden is, we are a great place to start that experiment.
Awesome. Yeah, I mean, people gotta have money to spend it. You know, you have to have money to invest in your community. And if. The politicians, if these greedy bureaucrats take a little here, take a little there, and they keep taking and taking, eventually you you just barely have enough to get by, and and there goes the community involvement. And. Now you're trusting some people who don't necessarily have the best interests of the community at heart. They wanna reward their allies and. And uh, you know, engage in cronyism or whatever it is, or or some sort of ideological idea about how they're gonna use taxpayer money. So. No, I think that's huge. That's key. And, you know, Colorado has this history of of liberty. Colorado's definitely been a a Mecca or a hub for the liberty community for a long time. What do you think, Jacob, in your opinion, what can be done to grow the liberty movement in Colorado?
The biggest thing is people just being willing to get involved. And I think it is. It's a time issue, and it can also be scary. I know asking people to knock doors. It's easy for me now that I have done it, but I remember the first campaign I helped and knocking on that first door, and it was very nerve wracking because. You know, you're just knocking on some random person's door, but a lot of people respond, even if they don't wanna vote for you or vote for your candidate, people respond pretty well to. To that because it, there's actual real engagement there. And so if you think, I don't have the time, or I don't think I'm the right person. Disassociate yourself of that notion. Um. Not all of the founders of this country were rich merchants and plantation owners. Oh, you know, some of the guys in in, I don't remember his name, but. One of the guys from Rhode Island, I mean, he was a pretty small farm owner, but he was. He kept the rest of them honest in terms of, you know, respecting rights when they were building the constitution and everything. So just get involved. You, you think, oh, well, who who am I? Because especially on a Washington level. We put up these politicians where we've really created like a whole new class of these people. They're not, most politicians are not impressive. They're not intimidating. They're not scary. Um. You know, they're there for you. They're there to listen to you. And so the more people get involved. The more this movement will grow and will ignite. While. People talk about running libertarians for every Rasmussen State House, I'd like to see a slate of liberty people, libertarian or not, running for city council. And gaining that control for the people and then reducing those powers so that. In 20 years and 30 years, when a new generation has come and they've been lulled because, you know, to not believe in freedom anymore because. Life is pretty good, it will be harder for the power mongers to gain that control back. It it is. It seems easy to take power to either punish your enemies or help your friends or all of this, but. I truly believe government should only exist to protect your rights, and if it's not doing that, it has no reason to exist at all.
Well said, well said. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, for a while I've been saying the future belongs to those who participate. You know, it's, it's, you gotta show up, put in the work, get out there, get involved. And whoever does that is gonna determine where our communities end up, and especially looking towards the future, future family or. Just wanna live in a community that's safe and comfortable and you can afford. I mean, it's, it's gonna take citizen involvement and people to to show up. So. Appreciate you, uh, appreciate you, Jacob. Appreciate everything you've been doing. Any final parting thoughts you'd like to leave us with?
Um, yeah, maybe one, it might be a little history weird notion. I'm not gonna read the the whole thing, but. Um, you can find this online, a number of articles written. On what happened to all of the founding fathers, because we talk about Washington, we talk about Jefferson and Adams and all the ones who became president or got into Congress or got into Senate. But there are. More than a dozen, maybe two dozen founding fathers who truly gave up everything for what they believed in. They lost. Their businesses, some lost their families, somewhere in prison for years, only to get out to find their family had either died or fled. Um. These were people who believed in these ideals so much that they. Have, they gave up more than most of us would give up. And I'm not saying I want everyone to give up their homes and their families and all of that. It's just the sacrifices we could make to make America. The free place, the liberty place where people. For the most part, leave each other alone, try and respect people's choices. We deal with people when people are actually, you know, and um, encroaching on somebody else. It may seem like a big sacrifice, but. It's like talking about the people who fought in World War II. There were people who have made greater sacrifices than I will ever have to make, and the least I can do. Is try and get involved. The least I can do is run for city council. And so. Get involved. You don't have to run for, you know, an office, but. Start a local group that goes and petitions your city council about an issue. Be that person who's there at every meeting. A lot of people are scared to, to voice their opinion. Be the voice for people who can't find their own voice.
Very well said. Uh, it's great words to leave on, and thank you so much for your time. Best wishes in your campaign and look forward to talking to you. Uh, as we get closer to the November election.
Thanks, Brandon. I really appreciate your time as always, and you do tremendous work. It is great to have a media source like yours that. Is not just talking about Washington politics all the time, but is actually informing people about what's going on in their, in their communities and their state, because. Most people know more about the White House than they do about their own state house.
I agree with you there, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for the kind words. And uh, look for, we'll talk to you soon. Take care, Jacob.
Thanks, Brandon.